Twenty-five, can we please all salute the flag?
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, members of the audience, would you please remain standing for a moment of silence, excuse me, staff member, Ms. Maureen Joyce Noble, passed away recently, I want to give her a moment of reflection and a moment of silence for Maureen, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maureen. Good evening, everyone, to the first regular school committee meeting for 2025, 2026 school year, a very exciting time, could the superintendent please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Chisholm.
Here.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Mr. Lipsit.
Present.
Mr. Morennon.
Present.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present.
Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have any action on six twenty-five, twenty-five minutes?
Motion approved.
Do I have any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Moving on to public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come before the committee? Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to caution you and the audience that this meeting is being recorded, when you sit down to do public comment, you are consenting to being recorded and also publish under, on YouTube. We have a three-minute limit on public comment.
There's a challenge.
That's going to be tough.
And so I would ask you to abide by those guidelines.
Yes.
But when you're ready, please state your name.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor Mike Concanon, to you and members of the school committee and the administration, I just wanted to stop by tonight, welcome you all back, hope you had a nice summer, got a chance to spend some time with family and friends and recharge your batteries, as we were commenting earlier, the older we get, the quicker they go, but again, we're back, ready to start another school year, so I just wanted to come by and extend my best wishes to each of you and to the administration, faculty and staff, wishing everybody a successful and productive school year. I did have the opportunity last Tuesday to attend the convocation, thank you for the invitation, we had a full house at the high school auditorium, a lot of positive energy, it was a great way to kick off the year, we heard some inspiring remarks from the Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth, and then on Thursday morning, I had the opportunity to see the opening of schools, at the high school, here at the Joyce, and then again at the Herald Wyman, had a great time, we had a couple of school committee members, a couple of city councilors that joined us, and again, we were met with positive energy and excitement from the students, so I think we're off to a great start, I know with so many moving parts, there's bound to be a couple of bumps in the road, and I trust that the committee and the administration will navigate our way through those bumps and make sure that we have a successful year. So again, I wish you the very best, I look forward to working with you throughout the school year, working with the city council as well, I think we have a budget that was passed in July that puts us in a good position to move the district forward, and again, anything I can do to help the committee, the administration, faculty and staff, happy to do so, and I look forward to discussing updates and items throughout the school year, the door's always open, the phone's always on, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the committee, I want to thank you for partnering with us and collaborating with us in getting our budget passed, and also for your support for the schools, really appreciate it.
Okay.
Moving on, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come before the committee, come right up. I'm sure you heard, but there's a three-minute time limit, okay, thank you.
I don't do this often, so.
Okay.
No, that's fine. Hi, my name is Megan Bowers, I live at six Westgate Drive, my daughter attends the Lynn Scott School. Here we are again, third year in a row of Lynn Scott parents having to come to the school committee, sticking up for our little school, I understand that we're not the only school that has lost bus routes, but it just seems that the Lynn Scotts always seems to be at the target of all these changes. Lynn Scott is about three-quarters of a mile away from Westgate Apartments, I know this means that we're in the proximity of the school, but have you ever driven down Pearl Street? Pearl Street, drivers do not follow speed limit rules, stop signs seem to be suggestions for them, there's no safe road for our students to walk from the Lynn Scott to Westgate and There's also only one crosswalk at, by the Kimball Court area, and once they cross there, there's no sidewalks for them to walk on. Sorry, as I remember, there was supposed to be no changes made to bus routes in the 25-26 school year, I also remember a last meeting that any communication would be made to parents in July about changes to bus routes, neither of these happened, changes were made, communication was not given. Day one, schoolchildren were waiting outside on Pearl Street for their bus to pick them up, parents had to stop and let them know that their bus will not be coming to get them, they had to go back home and tell their parents, what a sad way to start the school year. Please take a look at these roads and these changes again, and please add a bus route back to the Pearl Street, at Westgate Apartments, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming for the committee. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come before the committee for public comment? Hello, Councilman Toro, nice to see you tonight.
Hi Chair, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, to the committee, for those that don't know me, I'm City Councilor Rob Toro, so as Megan just mentioned, I'm here more to speak about the bus policy, I think I have a little bit of a unique perspective, being a city official, but I'm also a parent that is impacted by the changes, I have some flexibility though, owning a business, so it doesn't directly impact me like it does some others, but also a constituent of the city. The last-minute enforcement of our bus policy this year is concerning, as Megan mentioned, there's a few times last, last year, or term public comment, the public meetings, I'm sorry, in April and July, where there was mentions to the bus policy, transportation, and if it was going to change, and in a few instances, there were comments saying that if it were going to change, parents would have been notified before the end of the school year, and certainly not during the summer, and there was an instance in July where the committee was discussing this, and there was a mention that it wouldn't change in the 25-26 school year. I completely get policy, and I understand that it's been a policy, but my kids, for instance, haven't been, have been in school in Woburn Public Schools for five years, and this policy hasn't been enforced. If it were to be enforced, it should have been something that was mentioned at the beginning or the end of last year, with a buffer time of maybe this year, and then parents can figure out a way to get their kids' transportation to and from school for the next school year. Again, for me, I can adjust my schedule, but I would be totally against having my seven-year-old daughter walk from my house on Frank Street Court, down Green Street, down Monfair Ave, even with a crossing guard, the roads are scary, there's crazy people out there as well, just because we have a policy doesn't mean the policy is good, this should be a time where we're looking at the policy and identifying hazards, and maybe changing the It's unfair to these parents that have no option but to actually make these kids walk to school, right, because they have to work, there are certainly other streets outside of the Goodyear.
Mr. Toro, I'm just going to give you forty-five more seconds.
No problem.
I'm going to give you more time than anyone else.
Thank you, Pearl Street, Bow, Salem, I just ask that, you look at the revision or look at the policy, maybe see how we can add a couple more stops, every school still has bus stops now, add a couple more stops to pick up some of these kids that lost their routes, and then look in for the next season or the next school year to see if we can implement a better policy, but we need to do something for the kids that lost their school buses this year, and make the parents whole, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toro. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come before the committee? Okay, come on up.
Can I kind of reiterate, that's going around, so my name is Teresa, I have a fifth grader at the Lynn Scott, I also have an eighth grader here, my concern is with my fifth grader, we live in Kimball Court, there is no sidewalk, I walk to work every morning, and I work at CVS, so I walk the exact same route, there is no sidewalk on one side of the street, I believe it's Pearl Street, and then on the other street, there's only a sidewalk on one side, in the wintertime, I can tell you, they are not shoveled, and I end up walking in the street, now me as an adult, it's one thing, but for a bunch of little kids, it's not okay at all, these cars fly down this street like they're going on a race, yesterday I walked my son and two of his friends because their mom couldn't walk them, so I walked them, and we almost got hit by a car. It's not okay, something has to be done, I didn't find out that he didn't have a bus until the day before school started, there was no actual communication sent out, which is another story entirely, taking away the bus from these kids is a safety hazard for all these children, I don't know what it's going to take for it to change, I will also say that there is a crossing guard closer to the school, I believe it's Pearl Street, there's a crossing guard, whether it is a crosswalk, but near Kimball Court and Westgate whether there is not a crosswalk or sidewalk on both sides, there's no crossing guard to be seen, these cars come flying in and out of Kimball Court, in and out of Westgate, trying to avoid the highway, they do sixty, seventy miles an hour, even eight o'clock in the morning, these kids are going to get hit, so I definitely think we should reevaluate the bus, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry ma'am, did you say your name?
Teresa.
Oh, thank you Teresa, I appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come before the committee? Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Jose Olivera, three in a two road, I just have a few things kind of for us to ponder, because to start any new school year, we have to kind of look back and reflect on what happened last year, and there are a few outstanding things stemming from last year that I'd like to raise to make sure that they are top of mind, because the redistricting was number one, so we're kind of past that for now, there were twenty-two non-professional teacher status teachers non-renewed, I'm hoping that in the superintendent's update, we get an update about the status of that, because there are some things that I'm hearing that these positions have not yet been filled, and possibly other positions filled in place of those, so I'm hoping to hear that, one of the other components that I'd love to hear about is kind of when we, we think about committees, subcommittees, that's where a lot of things live and die, and there are quite a few subcommittees, just looking at last year, that met very little, and if we want to move forward the direction of Woburn Public Schools, I would think that some of these would, would meet more often, as opposed to some of them last met in, say, February, and so our school year goes through the end of June, so I'd like to see some more of that. Another component is our informational technology director, what's the status of that, we know that there is an interim person in place, is there a long-term solution for that, I know we had some wonderful website action the last few weeks where there was a certificate not renewed, so, just kind of getting an update on that, and then finally, curriculum, we have a wonderful website where if you click curriculum, it has different content areas, so to speak, that are listed, but when you click on those, they don't all go to actual places for information, so, it could be an error message, it could be that you go to a department that tells you, here is the place to find all the information you need for this department, and there's zero information, so, having that information for any caregiver is very important, you may recall a couple of years back, we had the health curriculum was a big thing in Woburn that people were upset about, having this information readily available limits some of these questions, because people can get answers when they see what the curriculum is, what the scope and sequence is for these various content areas, so I'd love to see kind of an addressing of that at some point soon, because we are a public school system, if we don't have accurate curriculum posted somewhere for people to look at, it's going to be really hard for people to get answers, and they're going to make their own inferences, and when that happens, that's where, you know, we get these rumors and issues that start without having things clearly stated, and then it puts the onus on the educators to be the messenger when it should be on the district, not the educators, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee?
Hello, Mr. Dillon, nice to see you today.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I think Councilor Toro really summed it up well, I've heard from a number of constituents with concerns about the changes in the bus routes, and they wished that more communication was given regarding that, so, I just wanted to go on record and say again that people are concerned, I spent a good fifteen, twenty minutes with one person on the phone today, and got a couple other emails, and again, the whole problem is a different bus route, bus stopped than what was last year, and they weren't aware of it, but, that's it, and I, I know it's not easy to navigate, and just something that I think should be looked at, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come before the committee? Hi, Ms. Friedman, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Nice to see you.
How are you? Hope you're doing well.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you so much, good evening, my name is Bernice Friedman, I'm a resident of fifty-six Leonard Street, I noticed that on our agenda tonight, you have a lot of policies that are up for discussion, so I thought I'd highlight some of our current policies that are relevant to some of the concerns raised by the parents here tonight, and also the discussions I've seen on social media, and so I will not be reading all of the policies for the sake of time, but want to highlight some of the policies that are currently in writing. Number one, our mission statement for the school committee, all stakeholders effectively communicate and advocate for the resources necessary to maintain and expand our technology, building infrastructures, personnel and curriculum to prepare our students for their best future, this was adopted January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Regarding commitment to accomplishment, the school committee accepts ultimate responsibility for all facets of school operations, and because it is accountable And because it is accountable to the residents of the district, the school committee will maintain a program of accountability consisting of the following elements, including clear statements of expectations and purpose as these relate to operations and programs. This was updated and affirmed March 5, 2025. School committee operational goals. The school committee is responsible for the people for whose benefit the school system has been established. The committee and each of its members must look to the future and to the needs of all people more than the average citizen finds necessary. This requires a comprehensive perspective and long-term, long-range planning in addition to attention to immediate problems. The school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. This was updated and reaffirmed March 5, 2025. Regarding public relations, misinformation grows where information voids exist. It will be the policy of the school committee to maintain a continuing information program for compiling and distributing news, events, noteworthy facts, statistics, plans, and forecasts necessary to the creation of an interested and informed public. And one last thing regarding district website and social media. The committee wishes to ensure accurate delivery of information. And as such, the Woburn Public Schools will maintain a district website and such district and school social media accounts as authorized by the superintendent. To my understanding, we do not currently have an official social media account for the district. This was adopted in February 28, 2024. A high priority will be placed on such platforms being accessible, frequently updated, and user-friendly. So, as you consider reviewing and updating our policies, I want to thank you. But at the same time, I would encourage you to review our current policies and put them into practice. Otherwise, these words are useless to many parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee?
Well, welcome. Nice to have you.
Thanks for having me here.
You're welcome.
I am also a parent with a child at the Lynn Scott.
If you want to, I'm sorry, ma'am, if you want to share your name.
My name is Shailene Day.
Thank you.
I'm over at Pearl Street at the very top.
Thank you.
Right across from the first bus stop that used to be there.
Okay.
Many of the parents, except for one, knew. I know that when the policy, when the remind came out to check all the bus stops, I went and I checked the bus, right? It said contact administration. Okay, that's weird. But there was no notification on the remind that there wasn't going to be certain buses. I know the bus routes were said to be altered. That's completely different than the notification that I was expecting when I found out that the bus routes were completely taken away. I'm disabled. Both me and my daughter have the same genetic condition called Ehlers-Danham syndrome. While they may be able to walk now, they might not be able to walk half a mile later down the road without significant pain coming at nighttime right before bed. Also with, that's already been an issue, let's talk about, I just wanted to remind on that, the communication. When I did go to get the bus list, when I looked at it through my phone, I could only get to line 93, which was the middle of line trip two. So, I couldn't even get all the way down to the Lynn Scott roads. Next year, when, or next year and the next couple of years, I don't remember specifically when, when the Harold Wyman becomes part of Pearl Street for our, when they redistrict, it is .6 miles through Google to the school, but it's two miles to Woburn Way going underneath the Rotary. And it's 1.7 miles going underneath. And I really hope that there is an adequate bus next year and hopefully that them taking away this bus at least saves money for next year's bus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and address the committee? I knew there was going to be one.
[laughing].
Hi, I'm Casey Walsh. I am mother of four kids who have gone through the Goodyear at some point or another. And I just, as I heard before, people expressing concerns about how this was presented to families and to parents. It was not told in a very clear way. And I know even the weekend before school started, I was telling parents that didn't know that this was going to happen. Because you just expect to check the bus routes and see that your bus has changed a couple of minutes, not that it's been completely eliminated. So, but that being said, we live .4 mile, or yeah, .4 miles from the Goodyear, but we have to walk down Montvale to get to the school. And there are families that have to cross Montvale to get to the school. And I understand like the state regulations being what they are, but to just blanket statement that all roads are the same and that all safety concerns are the same within a two-mile radius of the school or within a mile and a half of the school is, it's just not universal. Like, different roads should have different allowances. I know that across the street from my house, like across the street from where I live, people who have to cross Montvale, they've had their bus for a very long time. My little neighborhood is the only one that's on the other side of the street. And we did not have a bus when my kids started school. But that is because our neighborhood had no elementary school kids when my son started. So, they had not been a bus there for several years. The youngest kid on our street, I think, was a junior in high school. So, when my son started, it wouldn't have just ticked a box to, it was removed. And so, we had to have him added back on. So, I personally made a request for a bus stop and was granted it because of the safety concerns of walking down Montvale. And I fail to see where the difference has happened since that was 2020. And today, Montvale has become a safer place for children to walk. It's just, it's not, it's not making sense to me. And then to be just a little bit less personal about it, there are families in my neighborhood, there's nine children that are affected by this, and they are, it's like, it's such an intricate working of family and friends and community to just, when we had the bus, to get these kids to and from school. Because parents are working, parents are single, parents are elderly, caring for elderly grandparents, there's like a whole host of reasons why these families have had and relied on the bus for years. And to just have it taken from them without like a two-week warning is unjust. And I just, I beg you to consider the safety of the areas where you are taking the bus away from these kids.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the committee?
Good evening. My name is Rachel Packard. I live at 56 Nashua Street. I am here tonight regarding the busing. My whole community has no access to high school, middle school, or elementary school. I have an eighth grader whose bus stop was turned to be on the corner of Williams Ave and Montvale Ave. To walk to her bus, you need to cross Montvale Ave with no crosswalk, no blinking lights, and no crossing guard. I repeat, for my daughter to get to her new bus stop, there's no crosswalk, no crossing guard, and no flashing lights. I ask you to expand in regards to your policy on what the hazards are that is written because your hazards is not articulately explained in your policy. I welcome all of you to share with me and my daughter to do her bus route and you tell me how it is to cross Montvale Ave with no safety parameters. I really find it upsetting that families have to come here and ask for basic safety parameters. It's really unacceptable in 2025 to have a child cross a main road in the city with no crosswalk. I don't have a problem if she has to walk a block or two to get to her bus. I understand budget cuts. I understand the redistricting. But to safely not do it is unacceptable. Please look at your policy and revisit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Packard. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come and speak before the committee? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. I'm seeing none. And moving on to our agenda, City Council liaisons, the school committee, Mr. Viola, did you have an update? Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and administration. Just want to reiterate what the mayor said. Welcome back to school. We want to welcome back teachers, parents, students, and staff. We look forward to a great year. And if there's anything we can do, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you, Mr. Viola. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to reports and presentation superintendent staff. Dr. Charlie is going to give the committee an update regarding the opening of the school year.
Sure.
Yeah, we can just dim the lights a little bit so we can see. There we go.
Good evening. So, welcome back to everyone in the Woburn Public Schools to 2025, 2026. And I start by just saying thank you. We've been, we're off to a great start. I know we just heard some difficult things and we'll address those. Overall, as a district, we've, four days in, we've had four great days. Kids are in class, they're learning, teachers are teaching, the support staff is embracing. And so, it's really exciting to be part of the Woburn Public Schools this year. In my opinion, this is the best start we've had in many years. The door on the left is actually one of the classrooms at one of our elementary schools and it says, "In this class, we all fit together." And I think that's a nice way for students to enter into that particular classroom. But as a district, you'll hear me talk about the keynote about we all belong here in the Woburn Public Schools and the efforts that we're trying to make so that everyone feels that way. So, I know it does take a village and I think Woburn is a special village. Again, we heard some things just now. We will, I will speak to those in a moment. Before we get to the first couple of days of school, I just wanted to pause. People ask how summer vacation is. We don't really have summer vacation because we're really getting ready for the next school year. And we're really busy actually in the summer supporting a lot of our kids. So, what do I mean? On the left, I don't know how many years, Mr. Morena might be able to tell me, but the E S Y program at the Shamrock brings public service vehicles and our kids are able to climb around in the fire trucks and police cars. It's an annual event. It's a really fun day. It's always blue sky on that day for some reason, but that, that happens annually. And it's a lot of palpable energy for our young kids in the E S Y program. And then on the right, far right, there's a car wash at the high school that actually blocks traffic. I know that, I saw the mayor going through this year blocking traffic. But the students there, again, it's an annual event. It's $5 for a car wash. I think they made 700-something dollars. And so, it's again, a great day, sunny and blue sky. In the middle is a new program we did this year in conjunction with a few other schools. And so, it was an AI program and we partnered with Burlington, Arlington, Bedford, Revere, Maynard, and Chelsea. And so, students from Woburn were able to enter into this AI program. They were transported to the Microsoft or Burlington High School for four weeks. They were paid, they were given mentors, and then they did a presentation. This is the culminating event at the Microsoft facility in Burlington. The lieutenant governor came and it really is the power of collaborative, collaborative learning. And the students from all these districts partnered together and did presentations. We asked the students from Woburn if they'd be willing to come and do a presentation here and they were willing to. So, if we want to have them come and do their presentation, again, they are more than happy to do that. In addition, at the Malcolm White, we ran the ML summer program for our elementary students. We also had the SALT program at the Malcolm White. And at the secondary level, we had our traditional summer programming. And at the Reeves, we had our YMCA Power Scholars. And so, again, multiple different things going on during the summer. We'll speak to, it's all great. What happens though, and Mr. Burnham can speak to it potentially, is if you walk through our schools in July or August, they look like they're never going to be ready. And then when we turn the lights on on September 3rd or 4th, we're ready and the schools look great. And so, again, the summer programming is full. I want to speak to what I call the invisible work a little bit that happens during the course of every summer. We hire quite a few people over the course of the summer. In the school committee packet, I believe I provided it to you, we've hired 102 people over the course of the summer so that in a myriad of different capacities, whether it's administrative assistants, teachers, BCBAs, school psych, co-talk kindergarten teachers, a lot of paraprofessional teachers. We've hired the associate principal at Woburn Memorial High School, French teachers, business teachers. And so, the hiring happens again all summer long and it's a tribute to our leadership team that is here. Our principals, when they hire, invite candidates in. We don't hire alone. There's a committee if possible. The particular teaching staff do a demo lesson. And that's really turned out to be a great, a great way to find out whether or not people are up to the Woburn Public Schools standards. The onboarding that happens is digital. And so, when people are offered positions, it's the Tony Wyman, our HR director, reaches out to them. It's very seamless. When possible, I invite new staff, new teachers to come in and meet with me. It's a great opportunity just to put face to name, to learn a little bit about them and ask if they have any questions about the Woburn Public Schools. And that is always a positive experience during the course of the summer. The other thing to keep in mind when we hire new people is we have new teacher orientation. We switched that up a little bit this year. We had three-day, yeah, three-day training early August for new teachers and then culminated with a new teacher, everyone, new teacher orientation. The last week of August, it was an ice cream social at the high school where we welcome everyone in. We give them their IDs and their devices. And again, a lot of positive energy. The WTA is also there and it's really an opportunity for new people to come in the first day of school and feeling like they belong. With the budget that we just talked a little bit about, our fiscal new year is July 1. I can tell you that not much ordering happens between July 1 and the end of July 4 weekend, but very soon after, ordering occurs. And so, through Alex Dizio's office and the finance office, Debbie Tierno, who pays our bills, we are busy all summer long. Amazon delivers to door 26, but it buzzes in my office and we, Charlie, the custodian here, is great and we moved every, all the things coming into the Woburn Public Schools where they need to go. And again, it is a team effort to make sure that when students come in on day one, the teachers have what they need in their classrooms. The question relative to technology, we do have an interim director of technology, Kim Miles. She's doing a great job. She is one, she's understaffed a little bit right now. She is doing, as I said, a yeoman's job. One of the things that we did this year, and I'm really psyched to tell you, we ordered 500 new iPads, which means that we are now a one-to-one district K-12. And so, with the 500 new iPads, when they come, they all need to be programmed and distributed to where they need to be. and distributed to where they need to go. The new iPads, just for public consumption, they're for the kindergarten and first-grade students who can't yet type. So, Chromebooks are the mechanism for grade two and above. And Chromebooks take a lot of time and energy over the summer. So, Kim and her team spend a lot of time going into schools to make sure that the Chromebook, the carts are set up, things are charged, the keys aren't broken, et cetera, et cetera. And so, again, technology is very, very busy during the summer and has done a really great job. Our facilities department, you're going to hear, because he's on the agenda, Mr. Burnham, talk a little bit more in depth about some of the special projects. What I would say is thank you to everybody in the facilities department. All of our schools look great. It doesn't matter the age of the school. They are in pristine condition. I've had the opportunity to walk through all of them. There's, up at the Alta Vesta, they, they had wet wax for about four weeks. But Mike and Mike at the Alta Vesta are really, they do a great job. It's one of our older schools. But they are an example of the pride of their, their efforts. And again, Charlie Carr here and his team at, at the Joyce do, do an amazing job as well. They ask us to leave certain days, which we don't mind, so they can wax the floor. But the, the pride is evident, and so, thank you to the facilities department. Our leadership team, and I say that broadly, so that's all administrative team members. We've met multiple times over the course of the summer. This picture actually is taken from the last week of August. That was our last leadership team meeting, and it was actually held in the program room at the Woburn Public Library downstairs. It's a, it's a great space. And all of our leadership team met, as I said, multiple times on a variety of different topics. But a lot of it's anchored around student achievement and our strategic plan, and how can we improve outcomes for kids? And so, that, again, has been, again, I, I refer to it as the invisible work because these are the things that happen before staff and students come in. So, I want to talk about transportation at this point. Not surprisingly, I knew to some extent, I didn't know who was going to come, but the, the, I want to speak to it to the extent that I can. And then, at the end of my presentation, open it up to the committee for questions. I just want to, I want to start with the timeline. The transportation communication went out on August 20th. I know that. And so, with that being said, why August 20th? And I tried to uncover that a little bit. We have to send our student data to D E S I, and it has to get certified. Our D E S I data gets certified by August 15th. We certified our data on August 12th. What that does, then, is allows our student system, Power School, to roll forward. So, grades five, grade five students from last year roll to grade six, grade eight to grade nine. And it also, our kindergarteners roll in. And so, I, I'm learning this information. But what that does is allows the, the bus route to become finalized. So, in July, we take, or we took existing bus routes, and we have to modify predicated on the redistricting that we talked about. The policy that is referenced is it's a 1.5-mile radius to the schools. And so, Ms. Carpenter, who's the transportation coordinator, worked within the policy to see what that would look like. As we discovered, there were many students that were between 1 mile and 1 and 1/2 miles that would have lost a bus. And so, we tried to, to the extent possible, keep kids that were in that 1 mile to 1.5 mile on a bus. I will say that the students who were the priority in this, the thought relative to the transportation were the students that were being redistricted from one school to another. Admittedly, students at the Goodyear that were not redistricted and the bus went away, I will own the lack of communication relative to, to that. And so, that, that's on me. And the bus within, so what I'm saying is, the bus being changed for, within a mile, I didn't, I didn't communicate well enough to people that that would in fact happen. And so, when I hear people, I hear in person, the phone's been ringing, and the email's been going for a few days. So, again, I'm not surprised by some of these comments. What I can tell you is that yesterday, Ms. Carpenter and I took a field trip because I wanted to see exactly where people were coming from. I'm not from Woburn, and I don't know all the street names or different, where the curb cuts are and so forth. Woburn is a busy city, and so, certain roads are busier than others. Where there's sidewalks, you know, we, that, that's perceived to be safe. And I hear when people say that there's busy streets. So, I don't mean to be dismissive, but we had to start somewhere with transportation. I think it's a, I don't want transportation to be a barrier to school. I think I want all kids to get to school. So, you know, I'm committed to making sure that all students are able to get to school. This is not a, and I, the city council is here. Our, our transportation budget was fully funded. This in no way was, was a financial decision. This was driven by a change of where students were going to school and then trying to implement a policy to the extent that we could. And so, one of the things that we did, and whether it's effective or not is debatable, but on the website, there's a link with the bus information. There's a Q and A in multiple different languages. There's a bus stop request form. It tells you how and why you can request a change. The first person I would recommend anybody call is the building principal because they know the area, the geographic area best. Building principals, I had a meeting with them today to talk about the bus, not necessarily the routes, but we've had end-of-day, just at the elementary level especially, students who are going to programs after school rather than going home, just making sure that everyone gets home safely. We also, on the website, have access to the Bus Rights app. And that app, that people are familiar, allows parents at home to track the bus in real time, to figure out what time the bus will arrive. The first couple of weeks of school, regardless of the, if the routes are the same or different, the bus, busing it, in my experience, has been, we have to work out some of the kinks. And it's, that being said, I believe that the transportation, a lot of the transportation issues the first few days, thank you to the city for the communication because there's been some construction that has occurred. So, there's been some workarounds. But we are doing our, our level best to make sure that all kids get to school on time, ready to learn. And so, I will stop there, and I'll come back to any questions people may have.
Does anyone have any questions on the superintendent's presentation thus far? Thank you for pausing here for any questions. Vice Chair Chisholm.
I know that there's some concerns, and I agree, Montville Ave. I wouldn't want anybody to be crossing that street, especially in the morning. And we have a new police chief, so maybe we can do a formal request to add a crossing guard, if they're available, at least to, so we can figure out something more permanent, if there is something more permanent, but at least get crossing guards out there where there is some concern. And again, like you say, every street, Forest Park Road used to be this quiet little road, and I wouldn't want to be crossing that road. Every street in the city is, especially in the morning. But I think if we can at least add a crossing guard, if available, if they have them.
So, Officer Stokes is the Woburn Police Department who we work with. And my understanding is that there are crossing guards available to be added. And I think we've done so already, but we can revisit any and all of that.
And we have an audience full of city councils and the mayor. Maybe we can get some crosswalks put in where, where they could be. So, if we could just team up and work together and solve some of these problems, it would be good.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. Any more questions for the superintendent on this matter? Yes, Ms. Wetzel.
Excuse me. First, I'm glad it was a good opening to schools. That's happy. I'm happy to hear that. And I appreciate the conversation. We had Dr. Crowley a couple of days back as well. Thank you. But really, the elephant in the room, I think, is the busing. That's what we've heard a lot about, both from the community here, conversations I've had at pick-up and drop-off. And I think the community as a whole knew the busing was going to change. We talked about that during the redistricting process, so I don't think that was a surprise. But I think what was a surprise to the community was when bus routes changed for kids that weren't redistricted. And those, to my understanding, if you look at our last school committee meeting, Mr. Morena asked, are those buses for kids not being redistricted, are those going to change for this coming school year? I left that meeting assuming that they weren't. So, I think that was a surprise to me as well and to many families here in the audience. As well, Dr. Crowley, I appreciate you apologizing for the communication piece with families being notified towards the end of August. I understand how that works with Power School. We talked about that at our, our meeting. But I do think we need to do better with communication. We talked about that as well. Families need to know, if their buses are changing, it shouldn't be an email saying, "Check the bus right up." It should have been something that came out at minimum the end of the school year, saying, "Your bus is changing, and this is what it's going to look like." Families would have the opportunity to then prepare. And if this doesn't work for their schedule, maybe they can request a bus stop versus scattering at the last minute when school's about to start, when we're already all stressed out anyhow. So, I do appreciate the apology. I just think we need to make sure that that doesn't happen again, and we need to move forward from that and think, okay, now, what can we do as a committee and as administration to make this right for families? I think we, and it's on our agenda here, we need to look at our busing policy again, whether that's, do we look at the miles? Is it too long? Is a mile and 1/2 too far for a kindergartner to walk? Probably my kindergartner. Is Montville Ave, I'm at the Goodyear. I would not have my first grader or third grader walk down Montville Ave. My oldest daughter is visually impaired. When she tries to walk down a street, that's a dead end. I wish cars would have stopped because she is perfectly capable, a young woman, but they do because they're concerned. So, if she were walking down any of the busier streets, traffic would likely stop. I appreciate the addition of the crossing guards. I do think that helps a lot, but it doesn't solve the problem where kids walking down a busy street, the crossing guard has to stay where they are. And I know, talking with some of our crossing guards, some of them have walked kids a little bit further because they are concerned. I thank our crossing guards for that. They're fabulous individuals, but that's also not their job. And they can't leave their post either because they need to stay there if somebody else comes. So, I do think this is a big issue, and I appreciate everyone here that spoke today, anyone that I spoke with personally. I hear and I understand you, and I certainly think it's something that we need to look at, and certainly, the communication piece, something that we need to get better at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Mr. Lipsit.
A couple of things. First, I don't know that I can add too much to what Ms. Wetzel and Ms. Chisholm already said. I would note, especially given the presence of members of the city council and the mayor here, should any revisiting of bus routes conclude that perhaps we need to add some bus routes? I hope that we can work with the city and partner with the city to assure that funding exists for that addition. We would need some additional funding to add any bus routes. I understand that, given redistricting, we did need to move things around, and that has put some pressure on the system. So, you know, I don't know exactly the, the details of what that would entail, but I appreciate the attention of the city council, and hopefully, that's something that we could, we could work towards. If it's all right, I would like to ask quickly about another item that you mentioned earlier. And that is the, I'd like a little more information on the A I sort of session that students attended.
Sure.
So, just to sort of preface my question, you know, I mean, I am, I will say pretty openly, I'm very concerned about the growing presence of A I in education. This is something that I deal with on a professional level, on a literally daily basis. And so, I, I, I tend to be a technology-positive person. I'm an early adopter of lots of things. A I, to me, is a very dangerous road when it comes to education. And I'm very concerned about a message that there is a way for students to work with it safely. There may be that way, but I don't really know what it is. And what I have tended to see in my classroom is that A I has often been used sort of as a, I mean, very much as a shortcut, as a method of cheating, as a method of all sorts of things. And so, you know, while I'm, I'm really happy to see student collaboration, I'm really happy to see district collaboration, I'm hesitant to, I'm hesitant to endorse or, or back any, any connection of students with A I programming when I think their ability to, to work with these programs is potentially limited. A I is something that may be useful for people who have advanced training, who are very comfortable writing, who have done a lot of work in this area before. I think we're opening a Pandora's box, and it's a very concerning thing to me as an educator to watch. And so, I, I'm sort of, that's where I'm coming from with this particular very long-winded question at this point. But I wondered if you could speak to that a little bit? I don't know whether that was addressed at the conference that was attended. I don't know what the, what the, you know, I, I always worry when I see corporations sponsoring this stuff. Corporations have been pushing A I pretty hard without much evidence that it has any real benefit to anyone. And so, there's, I have a lot of concerns on, on this one. So, I don't, I'll, I'll stop talking.
So, let me, I, I'm going to do my best to answer your question.
Is there a question in there?
So, the genesis of this, just to be clear, is the collaborative nature between Arlington, Burlington, and Woburn. So, the three superintendents, we are in constant contact with each other. Burlington put this together and then invited multiple other districts into it, which you heard. And we participated in a four-week program guided by six college students and two licensed teachers. The partners were in Spirit A I and UMass Lowell. The why was a career academy of scalable alternatives to traditional internships in technology fields which are often unavailable to high school students. It leveraged the expertise of classroom teachers, interns, content experts, and industry professionals. The students worked to practice real word, real-world technical and career readiness skills with guidance from the teachers, interns, and industry role models. In the academy, students explored machine learning, A I concepts, and Python programming. They applied their knowledge and skills to put together an A I project with a high-quality curriculum from In Spirit A I. Students participated in career readiness workshops. They spent four days at UMass Lowell School of Engineering to learn about a variety of STEM career pathways. Professionals from Amazon Web Service, the Broad Institute, and Microsoft hosted tours and talks, and students learned about A I fields in fintech, cloud storage, robotics, and healthcare, and from career speakers. And so, while it was their, their finished product that I alluded to was, it was A I-generated, the idea behind this was to provide the students internships and exposure to potential career opportunities. So, I, I hope that answered your question?
It does, yeah. And I, you know, I recognize this is a really, really exciting opportunity for students. It's great to be able to have them have hands-on experience, coding, programming. I would, so, what I guess I would say is just, I think, I think it's, would really behoove the district to get out ahead of A I in terms of how we address it in the classroom, how we address it in the school system, how and when and if we use it in a really proactive way, because this is a wave that is crashing over our classrooms right now. And I say that as, you know, I, I teach juniors in high school. They're writing college essays. They are writing all sorts of things, and too often right now, they are not writing those things. So, I think we really, it would, I think, I would love to see Woburn really be a leader on this. I think a lot of districts, a lot of educational professionals are kind of holding off to see what happens with a lot of this stuff. But that's something that I think would be really, really good to, to try and push forward on. So, I, I thank you. I'll get off my soapbox, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Lipsit, do you want to, under curriculum, do you want to take a look at it to see how best practices are being used?
Why, sure. I'd love to.
Then, you know, you could, can hear from the administration of how they are putting limits on it or how they're using it or something like that.
I would love to talk about it, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lipsit.
In my time remaining on the committee, I'll talk a little bit.
Okay, great. Any more questions? Yes, Ms. Corumier.
Thank you. So, as far as the transportation policy, you know, we know that it didn't change in June when we voted. The enforcement changed. The enforcement changed. And I think that with the language, the way it is, I don't, I don't know that the language has to change. It's really the enforcement that is sort of the gray area. So as it says in EEAA, walkers and riders, exceptions to these guidelines may be made at the discretion of the superintendent. This will apply to specific hazardous areas to and from school. You know, it is not just if you're outside 1.5 miles, you get a bus and that's the only people who get a bus. And as we did talk about this throughout the conversation, as short as it was about this policy, I also don't think it's necessarily, hopefully, presumably going to cost more to add stops versus adding routes. I don't know. I haven't seen, I would need to look at the map with all of them on there, but naturally we wouldn't want to stop at everybody's street. You would never get to school and you'd have to leave awfully early. But I would think that presumably there is a possibility to add some stops without having to add a full route, which would then add more buses, if buses are even available, even more buses. I'm not sure how that plays out. And I, after that, agree that getting ahead of AI, it's coming and we can't stop it, but we need to make sure that our kids are provided with the tools and educated on how to use it best and what not to do with it. And I think that, you know, I understand Mr. Lipsit's stance on it and his ire over it, but it's coming.
And everything, yeah.
Well, I have a good news for you because after curriculum, he looks at the context.
It's coming policy, I know, I know.
It might come right to you.
It might. Break down the line. I've been waiting.
If MASC is taking a look at it, you know, it'd be interesting to see what other districts are doing.
Other districts have done it for sure. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions for Dr. Crowley, Ms. Malrenin?
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. If I could, back to Ms. Wetzel's point about me bringing this up, whatever that meeting was, back in June, I had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Wetzel over the summer when the emails began about busing. I was under the impression when I asked that question that busing would remain the same in September. With communications, again, issues came up, issues are being addressed. But are they? So tonight we're hearing that, you know, 1.5, it's not 1.5, this one, that one, fingers are being pointed. But Dr. Crowley wants to get kids to school. We all want to get kids to school. But how bad do you want to get them to school safely? And with that said, seeing tonight, we'll probably hear from other parents again, but it seems like tonight's concerns were the Goodyear Elementary and the Linscott Elementary, which I understand, you know, being a former bus driver, the first couple of weeks, the first week, two weeks of school, it's a mess. This one doesn't go to school, that one takes the bus, this one doesn't take the bus, and it kind of has to settle during normal routes and normal stops. So with that said, I mean, something has to be done sooner rather than later, Dr. Crowley. I don't know how it's going to be addressed, but I would like to see it addressed sooner rather than later, as in, what's tonight, Tuesday? Have it corrected somehow, at least with the Goodyear issues over there. The young lady that talked about basically Green Street, Wood Street, Nashua Street, I know former chief Furlow just left, that's a mess to begin. Anyway, all of these streets are a mess for the Goodyear and for the Linscott schools. So I would hope that that gets addressed sooner rather than later. And at this point, I'd like to, at least, I know it's a policy matter, but I'd like to have a motion to reinstate the Goodyear and Linscott stops as they were.
We don't do that.
Well, it's going to have to be addressed sooner rather than later, that's all I'm going to say. I wanted to address it tonight so the people are getting heard and not just getting, we want to get your child to school. We want to get your children to school and home safely. I want that point made because if something ever happens, it's trouble. I will go on to AI because not the transportation's a dead horse. It has to be addressed sooner rather than later. AI, Dr. Crowley, use it in the evaluation. I think, wow, that evaluation for the superintendent was pretty cool. It was all done with AI. So Mr. Lipsit's point, you're right. Used properly and through the right channels and typed correctly, AI may or may not have a place at the student level. But again, the curriculum, it's coming. It's going to be a topic before you know it. So I would also like to see that, you know, get looked at a little bit deeper than, you know, just a couple of seminars with a few schools. But I really, really want the Goodyear and Linscott folks to be rest assured that something will be done sooner rather than later. If I can't reinstate the stops, then I would like someone to do it sooner rather than later. It's just ridiculous that, you know, again, like some of you folks out there, I was under the impression everything would be the same come September. And now we're being told redistricting came into play. I asked about redistricting, said everything's the same with redistricting. So if we want to add buses, fine, add buses. If they add routes or stops, add routes or stops. Now, as you reminded, this weekend, a soccer game that, you know, maybe talk to a bus driver. Again, another part-time gig that I do is bus driving. You know, bus drivers are the best people to talk to. Where do you want the stop? It might say Bow Street and Salem Street, but that's kind of busy and more kids are down that end of the street. Well, let's move it to Bow Street and with our road to make it a little more convenient, a little more safer for the students. I just need to get these people at ease that something's going to be done and it's going to be done in the right way and it's going to be done safely, getting your students to and from school. So, thank you very much.
All right. Dr. Crowley, did you want to respond?
I would just say thank you. I understand Mr. Malrenin's point. I also, for a point of clarity and out of respect to Mr. Lipsit, my, the evaluation was not completely done by AI.
No, no, I know.
I created, I created a podcast using multiple documents and I was very clear that it was AI generate, like, so just.
So given that this is a, I'm sorry, Mr. Austin, did you have anything? Okay. Given that this is a high-interest item, the only thing that we are authorized to do is, is refer this to a subcommittee. So would you be willing to update? I think resources is probably the best as to what's happening with the bus stops, like as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
The committee updated?
Sure.
Okay. And is it my, is it, am I understanding this right, that you are going to consider the public comment tonight and take that into consideration when you're looking at bus stops?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Ms. Wetzel, if you can convene resources, then Dr. Crowley can update the committee via you, your committee, as quick as possible as to what's happening with the bus stops. And then hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a nice readout and this issue will have been resolved to the best of the superintendent's ability. The committee cannot put bus stops in operation as that is a completely operational matter, but we can direct the superintendent to take into consideration the public comment and rethink the use of bus stops. And if there's a financial issue attached to it, it sounds like we have support for that, so. Does that sound good to everybody on the committee? Ms. Malrenin, do you want to add anything else?
It, it sounds good enough, but it sounds better if the superintendent went to the leadership team, the principals of these schools, met with the bus company, talked to the bus company, and then came up with a solution to report it back to the resource subcommittee that comments were heard, things were addressed, the same way you may address anything else that comes before us, to his principal in the building. Those are the people that are in charge of the building. But if you don't want to go that route, you want to.
I think Dr. Crowley can ask.
Rest yourself the resource. It's going to be stressed out again and again and again, and the people aren't going to be heard. So getting back to the redistricting issue, people aren't being heard. I want these folks that came here tonight, took the time out, the people that wrote us the emails, I want them to be heard, get answers addressed sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we have a good plan. Ms. Wetzel, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to say I'll reach out to the subcommittee tonight so we can quickly get this, and I will personally put public comment on it as well, just so people that would still like to have their voice heard can come to that subcommittee and we can try to get this decision made as quick as possible, working with administration and the leadership at our individual buildings and our families as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. I appreciate that. And I'm not putting it to policy because I feel like that Cormier is busy with other things and I think dealing with the word hazard is.
It's outside of our scope.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a good action plan. Dr. Crowley heard the public comments tonight. The committee is taking action by referring it to resources. We will look into this issue more in depth. The other thing you mentioned tonight, Dr. Crowley, was co-taught classes, and I just find this completely exciting. So, Ms. Malrenin, can you, under SSA, could you look into the vision and the success behind co-taught classes?
Yeah, I think on the reference to Dr. Crowley's hiring sheet, there's a couple of people on here.
Yes.
It's called somewhere, but yes, I'll look into that as well, so.
Because I think that's an important initiative that might have gotten lost. So, Dr. Ryan, that would be great. If you could just update the committee again at your convenience on that issue.
I'll teach you.
All right.
So.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Ryan.
Oh, we're not even done yet.
I was about halfway through.
Okay.
But I, I'll go quickly. Before I do, I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at nine o'clock, Ms. Malrenin, with the principals. There's multiple topics. And so I heard what was said tonight, I hear you, I want kids safely in school, so we will move quickly.
Thank you for that, Dr. Crowley. I appreciate it. I'm sure the people here, I appreciate it as well.
So one of the things, again, going back to summer, we did have the forum with Donna Denisco, Denisco Design, on July 30th at the high school. And I want to just give people that context. The questions, the form is still active. We have over 100 responses and I, for future deliberation, maybe later in the meeting, we could talk about how long you want to keep that form active or if you want me to push it out, whatever you perceive to be the next course of action. We did hear earlier from the mayor, our convocation was September 2nd, 2025. It was great. We kicked it off, the marching band, the Woburn Memorial High School marching band came. It was a surprise to virtually everybody in the room, under the direction of Jack Tully, who's done an awesome job. We are an award-winning marching band and so something to be really proud of. The students actually directed the marching band and they did the black and orange and the teachers, I think, the feedback was, that was really the highlight of, of the morning. And so the secondary highlight, and I don't mean to be in any way dismissive, kids, I think he'd agree with me. Dr. Patrick Tutwiler, who's currently the Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, came and did a keynote on the sense of belonging. And he was, his three Bs, be seen, be heard, and be seated. He was, and be brief. And so he was, hit all the right notes. It was a pleasure to welcome him to Woburn. I think the staff, he was well-received. He did a great job of telling his story, but then encouraging staff to hear stories about their kids and humanize everybody as they enter into their classrooms for the school year. So again, appreciate Dr. Tutwiler's coming to Woburn. He currently, as I said, is the Secretary of Education. This past spring, he was both the Secretary and Commissioner of Education, and prior to that, he was a superintendent in Lynn, which is how our paths intersected. So with that being said, we also heard from Ms. Chisholm, from the school committee, and the mayor, as he alluded to earlier. We spent time introducing people here from the central office as well, because there's a lot of people that do things behind the scenes and nobody knows. For example, if I have a question on employee benefits, I email this MICA person and you never know who that is. And so having people from central office come and just be seen and recognized and spend time doing that, the feedback from some of the staff afterwards was it was appreciated. So that, the WTA had the meeting afterwards and the people went back to their schools. The next day, on Wednesday, professional development occurred, and then on Thursday, our students came. And so, again, the weather has been incredibly cooperative. Opening day on the far right, that's the high school, and again, I'm trying to not identify students, but on the far, far right, you might recognize Tom Quahle as the principal welcoming students into the high school on the first day. Students were incredibly respectful, well-dressed. City Councilor Dylan was there, the mayor, Mr. Malrenin. The, the energy was palpable. It was incredibly well-organized. The staff were in the, in the forum area. Any student with scheduling questions were, those questions were being addressed immediately. And within five minutes of the bell ringing, students were in their advisories. And so I, I'm really pleased at how well the high school opened up. It's a sprint, but I did wind up making it to all of the schools on that day at different times. Ms. Patrici on the far left at the Goodyear, she is not casually dressed on purpose, but she dressed up as a lion. So she needed to not wear dress clothes, but again, to make it welcoming to students.
That's a dedication.
Yeah, it really is. So she, she and Ms. Williams dressed up as lions welcoming the kids, but it was, it was hot underneath the lion costume. So.
Yeah.
And then in the middle, on purpose to some extent, is the Kennedy. That's the sixth grade opening meeting, and Principal Carl Nelson is addressing the sixth graders. And I say that, this was their first opening day and Carl's last opening day. So Mr. Nelson is retiring at the end of this year, and he's been the principal at the Kennedy for 26 years. And so quite a long time, and so just want to recognize Mr. Nelson for his commitment to the Kennedy for 26 years. The enthusiasm that he has with the sixth graders is probably the same as he had 26 years ago. He's excited, the kids are great. And so we did have, as I said, a great opening day at all of our schools. And so we're off. The left picture is some of the preschool staff at the Reeves. There was an orientation. I don't know who's more excited, the kids or the parents, to have students, their kids go to preschool. And yesterday was the first day of preschool. This was the orientation on Friday. And on the right, all of our varsity and sub-varsity athletic teams are in season. That is on Thursday, the opening day. There was a doubleheader, Mr. Malrenin alluded to it, of a soccer game, a boys' and girls' soccer game at the high school. And so within, you know, we, a week, we go from nice and getting ready to full throttle. And so it's exciting. And so one of the things I alluded to at the convocation is team. And so Secretary Tutwiler talked about this as well, being a member of the varsity basketball team, he was, not me. And, but you know, you say one, two, three, together. And so, and team is together, everyone achieves more. And so that was the message that we tried to deliver at the convocation. Secretary echoed it. And so we, as I said, feel really, really good about where we are in the Woburn Public Schools, so.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Any lingering questions for the rest of Dr. Crowley's presentation? Ms. Malrenin?
Just quickly, Dr. Crowley, I know I've seen the emails and notices, probably in the stack of notes there, Lisa Taman from Immac now has breakfast, snack, breakfast, lunch, and afternoon snacks, rassoons.
Yeah, so just an update, so we, all of, all, every student in the Woburn Public Schools is eligible for free breakfast and lunch. And so we worked invisibly during the summer to make sure that there was breakfast for every student when they walked into school, whether it's a hot breakfast in the cafeteria or a grab and go that they could eat as a snack later. But we, we know that if kids are hungry, it's an impediment to learning. And so it was a priority that she alluded to last spring, and we worked on it over the summer. We're rolling it, it's at the elementary schools now. The middle and high schools will go in a week or two. They just needed to get some of the kinks worked out about the delivery system from the food service department. But Ms. Taman, as you, she's come before the committee in the past. She does a great job. We're lucky to have her. And so she's, she'd be more than happy to come back if anybody would like to have that as a future agenda item.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Any more questions? Yes.
It's more, I would like to see if we can write a letter of thank you to the band members. I mean, you're just going to do one, just because they're down to the second day that they could sleep in and they were there prior at seven o'clock in the morning, ready to perform for all of us. So I, I just want to just do a shout-out to them because they were just amazing. And it was just nice to see the people that could, you know, sing along to Black and Orange, so it was really, really nice. So I just would like to see if we could just write a quick thank you to them that sent it to the high school.
Sure.
At the moment, we appreciate it.
Do you want that to come from me or Dr. Crowley?
It can come from you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just because I think it's important to know that, you know, thinking up early, when they have like two days left, anybody that has a teenager or raised one knows that that's pretty tough to do.
Okay.
So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. I'll write that. Anything else on this topic? Okay, moving on. Facilities update. Mr. Burnham, Director Burnham?
Come on, Doc.
Should we put the lights on for him?
Keep doing the doc.
Hi, Mr. Burnham. Nice to see you tonight. Thank you for having me.
Nice to see you. Thank you for having me. A little disappointed. I thought everybody was here for facilities, but I guess not. I'll be brief. You know, as Dr. Crowley said, the summer is when we get a lot of things done in the buildings. Couldn't do it without the staff that we have. We have a great staff in the facilities department, you know, from top to bottom. They do a really good job. A lot of the things we worked on this summer were, obviously, some mechanicals in the buildings, right? There's a lot of things that need to be updated or maintained. We're working on trying to update all the control systems in the buildings to be more energy-efficient. We got a lot done last year, but we still have a long way to go. One of the big projects that we started this, this summer and completed just before school started was new door locks in four of the schools, in a key system designed for the entire district that hopefully we can implement over the next year, maybe two, to get, you know, security back. There's been times when, you know, there's, some of the buildings haven't had key changes in 30 years. So, that was a big thing to get underway, and we got completed, which I wasn't so sure we'd be able to do. We also did some space reconfiguration in several buildings to add, like breakout spaces or meeting areas, which was, you know, helpful for the change in the buildings, right? A lot of these buildings that you've been in were designed one way, and they're being used in different ways now. So, we also implemented a work order system for the custodians to keep track of all of the items in the building, so that we can kind of get a better handle working with Alex and the finance side of where we're spending the money, and where we'd be better off trying to replace things rather than repair. So that's in its infant stages, but we're still working on it. As, you know, we worked with the mayor and worked with the DPW to try to work together departments to save funds for the city. And I think the DPW's been great. They've got a lot of things done in the buildings, paving, stormwater mitigation, parking areas, a lot of different things have been done in a lot of different buildings. It would have cost 10 times what we've spent if we didn't have the use of the DPW. So, thanks for that, because it's been a big help. Which led to working with the mayor and the city council on the playground that's going to be happening at the White School, which hopefully will get done soon, if we can make our timelines and weather is permitting. But that's a big project. Same with the shamrock roof. I believe that goes out to bid sometime this week. So, we should be ready to go for that come spring. That pretty much covers it. I mean, we could go on and on and on, but I don't know if anybody has any questions for anything that we've done.
Really appreciate the update thus far. Mr. Lipsit, questions for Burnham?
It's more a thanks. I just want to personally thank you for the work that you did, especially around the Malcolm White Playground. You know, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for their partnership on this as well. I, both sort of as a, as a school committee member and as Malcolm White parent, had a chance to sort of interact with you and with other Malcolm White parents on, on the playground itself. And, you know, your attention to detail, your attention to the process, and your commitment to getting it done was really great. This has been, you know, an issue of longstanding at the school. So it was great to see it addressed head-on in a really proactive way, you know, bringing in members of the school community. So thank you for all the work you did there.
My pleasure. Thanks for the help.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Ms. Wetzel?
Yeah, just thank you too, Lenny. Appreciate all the work you've done. I've seen some of it just in the walkabout for some of the schools. It looks fantastic, and I know a lot of work goes into it. And I was gonna allude to the Malcolm White Playground too, because I know a task force was put together, parents to help sort of plan that, and educators. And I think that was awesome. And I think it's a great example, too, of how our community really comes together on important issues like this. So shout out to you on your team on that. And I look forward to working with you on resources capital planning, but I think you'll be spared this meeting, but.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Okay, Vice Chair Chisholm, and then Mr. Moren.
It'll be in my minutes from finance, but you could just do a brief feelings on the train energy audit?
So, I can, yeah. I could be here for an hour.
Yeah, I know, just a minute, just because if anybody asks, I really.
Yeah, so, so we brought train in, and they're looking at our equipment, looking at possible capital replacement of some equipment, and how we could fund it through energy savings. So we're in the infant stages of that. We're gonna work with the city, because we want to look at city buildings as well to maximize our, our efficiency. So as the city's facilities manager comes back on, we'll work together and move it forward.
Okay. I mean, as a taxpayer, I appreciate that, too. I mean, technically, we save some money. But I have a request from somebody that you probably know and remember sitting here at the table. The clock at the Hill Wyman is eight minutes off. He would like to see if you could address that.
I'll see what I can do.
I'm like, you can tell he's getting close to retiring.
He doesn't have a ladder. Walking his dog, you mean?
Eight minutes.
Only one thing from Dr. Moren. That's a nice.
That's what he wants.
Expect more.
He's still in summer mode.
Mr. Moren, did you address something?
Thank you, Mary. If I could, Lenny, again, someone sat here for a while. The water filling stations at all the schools for the publics, not aware of those. The students are bringing their water bottles, they fill them up. Just, you know, keep up. When the license says change it, change it, whatever, whatever. I know you guys, you know, on top of that all the time. And also, keep us abreast, keep us updated on that shamrock roof for the fifth year in a row.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Moren. Anything else for Director Burnham? Seeing none, okay, you are excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the puzzles.
All right, we have to, let's, let's pick up the pace, people. So, the WMHS handbook, I am told that this ran, was only small updates to the handbook. It went through legal, and now it's being presented for our immediate consideration. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
On the motion?
Of course.
Just because I'm picky. I was just wondering if the table of contents could be put alphabetically, so it makes it easier for people to find things. I don't know if there's a reason that's the way it is. I just wanted to throw that out while we were discussing it. And I didn't get a chance to do that before this meeting. So, just want to pass it on to Sir Thomas Quahle.
Do you need to have, do you want to see that before you approve it?
No, I don't.
Okay, so it's a suggestion?
No, I just thought for user friendliness, it might be helpful.
It's a great suggestion.
But I don't, I don't know if it just, they just keep adding things as they go along. Yeah, so if they are considering.
That is prob.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the handbook? Mr. Moren?
Thank, I'm happy to approve it. I just want to know, again, some of the concerns tonight, the communications. Where will it be found on the school website? Is it just get it to the IT people, get it on the Woburn Memorial High School handbook, so they can find it, just so it's easily accessible to families at the high school?
It is available on the website, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. All right, great. So, Mr. Quahle can go ahead and publish that.
Great. I'll let him know. Thank you.
And we can put it on the website as approved by the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay, voting on the school committee calendar, 2025, 2026. Everyone received that? And Vice Chair Chisholm, you'd like to make a date change, I believe?
I'd see if we could change Wednesday to the 24th, September 24th to the 25th.
Does anyone object to moving the date of the 24th to the 25th?
I may not be able to make it, but I'll try.
So, the PM, okay, if you'd like?
Yeah, that's fine.
Are you sure, Mr. Austin? You want to?
Yeah, I'm gonna try.
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to reply sooner, if I'm working everything, so.
Okay. Mr. Lipsit?
Madam Chair, perhaps is the 23rd available?
I'm out of time. Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah. And the 26th is a Thursday?
Twenty-fifth is a Thursday.
Oh, wait.
That's where we're going.
Five, 23rd, sir?
Twenty-fifth.
Sure.
We don't need to vote.
I'll try.
And then on the 11th, November, was closed. Do we want to do the 12th, November 12?
Okay, let's do, so do I have a motion on the moving 24 to 25?
So moved.
Second. Do I, is there any discussion on the motion? Is, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So our, our school committee meeting is moved from September 24th to September 25th. Ms. Chisholm, did you have something else?
Yeah, on November 11th, Veterans Day. Can we change it to the 12th? What do we need it?
Ms. Wetzel?
MASC's conference starts the 12th.
Oh, that's a little late.
Do we want to do the 10?
I can do the 10.
What do we think about November 10?
Marine Corps birthday.
Marine Corps birthday, okay. Do I have a motion to move November 11th to November 10?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. That meeting is moved to November 10?
Yep.
Anything else at this juncture?
On the 26th Wednesday, for those that don't have to cook for Thanksgiving, but could we change that to maybe the 25th to Tuesday?
I think we usually like nix that meeting.
Yeah.
The half-day, too.
Okay. I'll make a motion to remove the November 26th.
Andrew, a little too enthusiastic about that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I will make a motion to remove November 26th from our schedule.
Okay, I have a motion to delete November 26th?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
I will also make a motion that we remove December 31st towards 25.
Second.
Really?
Yeah.
That's so boring.
It's, you want to meet, you can meet.
We can meet at midnight.
I have a motion to delete New Year's as a school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes.
All right, but can I just say, if we do all these, we're only going to have two meetings in two months, and that would be the start of the budget season. And even though people think we only do that May, we really start earlier than that.
Sure.
So.
Do you want to add a meeting?
Could we head like December 17?
You can do that. December 17th as a possible meeting?
So would December and November be better?
It doesn't matter. We're just gonna need some of these.
Yeah.
So, 12, 17? Yes, but I agree, another one.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay. I have a motion to add a meeting of the Woburn School Committee to 12, 17, 25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that motion passes. And we're adding a meeting of 12, 17, 25 to the calendar.
Do you need one in November, too, do you think, or not?
No, I just was worried, because we have to bring constant determination like twice. So if we started to have too many of them, I was gonna be making you guys quit for a special meeting.
You don't think the deadline's gonna get pushed back again?
Well, that is true. We don't want to assume. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, seems like we have a good action plan going forward in some meetings. I suppose if anything comes up, we can always schedule and look at that the next meeting as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, that was a robust discussion. Moving on to policies in action. This is where I'm going to refer to Ms. Cormier to present what policies are on the table and what needs to happen with all of them.
Yes, so, we have for action today. First, policy EF, school cafeterias. I don't know that we need this policy, so I am suggesting to remove it just for ease of navigation of the policy manual. So I will make a motion that we remove policy EF, school cafeterias.
A motion to remove that from the policy manual. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Cormier, could you tell us why you think you can?
MASC does not recommend it, and it seems, I can read it, it's three lines.
Oh.
"The school committee operates its cafeterias as necessary convenience to students and as auxiliary service to the educational program. The administration is encouraged to operate the school lunch program so as to derive the maximum educational value from it. Cafeterias are authorized as a nonprofit service to pupils and staff, but no pupil shall be compelled to use the cafeteria."
Okay. When was it first enacted?
I couldn't tell you that.
Oh, all right.
But it has a legal reference, MGL 7172.
It's probably just when cafeterias became.
Became, yeah. When they had a start giving.
From 1962.
When you stopped going home for lunch.
Yes.
Okay. So, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, and that policy has been removed from the policy manual.
Right. Next up is EEA, Student Transportation Services. No change from the committee or the MASC. So I would make a motion, well, I guess I can, do we want to vote on each one individually, or just go through the list?
Just go through the list.
Okey-dokey. The EEA B, Transportation for Exceptional Children, was, language was updated by MASC. EEA E, School Bus Safety Program. EEA EA, Bus Driver Examination. EEA EA-1, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers. This actually changed to the categorization to EEA EB, so we'll update that if that is voted appropriately. EEA EC, Student Conduct on School Buses, which is also listed under JICC. EEA EC-R, which is also JICC-R, Student Conduct on School Buses. And JCA, Assignment of Students to Schools.
Okay, taken on bunk. What, what are you recommending for all, what is the policy subject?
I would like to make a motion that we approve all of these policies as presented.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Moren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could, Ms. Cormier, just a reference on the assignment of students to schools.
Yes.
Especially after the registering we went through. I don't know, it's been a while since I've looked at these, so.
So, quickly, I can read it. Generally, students will attend school in the attendance area which they reside unless the superintendent has granted special permission. Special permission may be granted to the following reasons. If the change involves an exceptional child, a hardship case, or if there are medical considerations. If the change appears to be in the interest of the child, of the schools, for disciplinary or administrative reasons. If the legal residence of a child changes from one attendance area to another during the school year, and the parent slash guardian wishes the child to remain in their former school, permission will not extend beyond the current school year. Permit secondary school students to take courses not offered in their assigned schools. School bus transportation will not be provided for students attending schools outside their attendance area unless they can be accommodated on existing bus routes and schedules. An exceptional child is involved, or a hardship is involved, or unless specific permission is granted by the superintendent.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, those policies have been approved. And then I believe you have one more action item, Ms. Cormier.
So I do, with an update. So, we previously, in October of 2023, approved a civil rights policy for the food service program. Mr. Dizio provided from legal an update, which actually, this one, EFE-1 Food Service Program Civil Rights Policy, will replace our current policy.
Okay.
What I provided last week to the committee, and what is listed in our agenda, includes now, and what would have been my vote offered, is to add the procedure for filing a civil rights complaint. That does not have to be in the policy. We can link to it. And so what I was going to bring forward to the committee is that first, we replace EFE with this language, adding our non-discrimination policy as a reference. And then, this language that was provided last week for filing a complaint can be a link on our website that we add at the bottom of this policy. We don't have to act on that now. The administration can just add a link to the website for how to file a complaint without us voting on it. But I think it's helpful to update the language in our policy if people are looking there. So I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules at this time for this policy, and then I will review exactly what my motion is.
Okay, so I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Does everyone understand?
Yes.
Okay. I have a second. Do I have any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. So the rules have been suspended. Now what's the action?
So as we discussed in June, we did approve the language in EFE-1 Food Service Program Civil Rights Policy. I would like to replace EFE with that language that we previously approved, and add AC, Non-Discrimination Policy, as a reference at the bottom, as I did in what was passed around. And as well as a link that will be created for the website with the complaint procedure, that, the language of which was provided to the committee last week. Which, that language doesn't need to be approved, but it's been provided. Which, that language doesn't need to be approved, but it's been provided for information purposes.
Okay.
So my motion is to do those things.
Okay. I have a motion to approve this language integrated into our policy, is that right, Ms. Cormier? No.
We don't need to change the lang, we don't need to approve the language, I would just like to remove the previous policy.
And change it.
Putting this one in, and then linking that language.
Okay.
That can change, you know, as the laws may change, but we won't have to change the policy because it's just the law.
A motion for what Colleen just said, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? My understanding is this is just elevating the civil rights around food programming, and really making more protection for kids, as it connects to food shortages and food insecurity, so.
And allergies and other accommodations, and then providing a way to put in a complaint or grievance.
Right, okay. And giving them a pathway to complain about food if they're not being treated fairly under a civil right.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to this policy? Thank you, Ms. Cormier.
And thank you.
So that's done, and it's my understanding that the administration will link the grievance policy to this policy, so that people will know how to.
I'll provide everything that we need.
You'll provide, okay.
MacLeod will send to the MASC for us.
Thank you so much.
You got it.
All right, subcommittee reports. Finance and Personnel Subcommittee, Vice Chair Chisholm.
Madam Chair, before that, I just would like to give a little shout out to Colleen, she spent a tremendous amount of time doing this, probably more than anybody else in their subcommittees, but I really appreciate all the work that she does, so. And thank you for sending it to us so we can read it at our leisure.
I'm doing my best.
It was awesome.
Thank you.
So Finance and Personnel met twice over the summer, we're such a hardworking group. We met on July 31st here at the Joyce Middle School Conference Room, and Principal Quailey attended and brought the subcommittee request to begin charging students to park on the school property this year, which has gone into effect, so I'll go quickly through this. The fee was going to be $30, and he gave us the policy that he would like to do, and the map, and all sorts of stuff, and I did send those out to the committee. Seniors will have a priority to park, there'll be 200 spaces approximately, and then he will do a lottery if there was more than 200 requests. Students who had a job after school will note that on their application to have a priority for that. There will not have to be a person hired, because I was worried about our budget and asking somebody else to do something else to collect the fees. It was going to be handled through the administration. The passes will be orange, placed inside the windshield, they are not transferable. The privilege can be revoked by administration, and he has in fact sent us a further handbook how this will be handled, and he was going to send out the newsletter mid-August so that students and parents would be aware of this. The payment could be made through my schoolbook, Bucks, and the committee gave a favorable recommendation, and then, I think we may need to do a full vote on that just to make it official, but, so I would make the recommendation that we approve the parking fee at the high school of $30.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Okay, so then we had Superintendent Crowley updated at the meeting at City Hall, 7:29. Discussion that money that would be turned to the city for the school budget was discussed. The Malcolm White Playground would be built, the Shamrock Roof would be installed, special education stabilization fund money was added, and the remaining was going to be going to the city's general fund, so that's a win for both the city and for the schools. Personnel, we just had an update on the hiring, and all regular ed positions at that point were filled, and the associate principal at the high school had gone through the interview process and was meeting with Superintendent Crowley the next morning, and you know now that he has been hired. And so that was that meeting, quick and easy. And then on August 14th, we met here again, Superintendent Matt Crowley, Finance Director Alex Dizio, Assistant Finance Director Patty McKinnon, School Committee members Andrew Lipsit, Michael Melrennen, myself. We sent the invoice packets and received by the members, they were viewed, questions were submitted, answers were found acceptable. Graduation expenses were asked for clarification, but they were all within the budgeted figure. The driver's ed car had been sold at the auction for $7,500. And then for packet one was $1,548,882.89. Packet two was for $1,681,854.67. Packet three was $43,712.70. And packet four was for $530,841.35, all those things that we were starting to order. So we need a vote to approve those packets.
Move. I'll make a motion to approve those numbers, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's been approved.
And there was questions about following up the money that was paid by the WTA School Committee, so we turned over to the school department, but maybe we could use it doing something else, and the superintendent was going to follow up with the mayor on that, and maybe we can help towards maybe more of the roofing and stuff with the security measures that Lenny had talked about. We talked about the parking pass in Principal Quailey's newsletter, and there was questions on rentals at WMHS, and was forwarded to Policy Committee for review, and we're going to bring that to Colleen. And then we talked about Trane, who is looking to perform an energy audit in our schools, and they will provide the schools with $6.5 million in funding to complete the updates, and there were some questions, and Superintendent Crowley will continue discussion and update the committee as needed. And on personnel, the hiring was going well, special ed still had some positions that were being tried to fill, the associate principal at the high school has been filled. Mr.
Kari.
Kari, comes to us from Newton North.
Yeah, his last name is Ru.
Yeah, Ruhac.
Ruhec, I believe.
Yeah, R-O-U-H-A-C. He will be introduced to the full committee once he is sometimes to be introduced to staff and students at the high school. And then we just had the changes in addition positions, elementary lead teachers, and we updated the job description, no change in stipend, all for fiscal '26 budget would be paid out of. Elementary pilot teachers, a one-year grant-funded position to support K through five math implementation, and middle school department heads. The updated job description previously titled Assistant Department Heads, and CBA and stipend has stayed the same, replacing middle school TLT, and fiscal '26 budget however may supplement with some grant funding this year, and just for fiscal '27 will be a line item. And high school department heads, updated the job descriptions, no change in the stipends, and it's all in the fiscal '26 budget. Mentors for fiscal '26 increased for one year, mentors to 2,500, with significantly increased responsibilities, and Ms. Young is proposing to add a middle school mentor-coordinated position. Job descriptions will be sent to the full committee, and all of these stipends have been agreed upon and jointly constructed with the WTA, and we adjourned at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. I just have a quick question on the train, I take it it's not the older buildings? That would be the target of the train assessment? Or is it the newer buildings?
No, it's all of our buildings.
It would be all of them.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, my only question. Any questions for Vice Chair Chisholm?
I have a brief update relative to the parking. Mr. Quailey today said there were 140 students that got passes so far, so it's going well.
Good, great.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley.
And, sorry, well, it's future agenda item, but he will be at the next school committee.
Right. Okay. Community Relations Subcommittee, Mr. Austin.
We haven't met.
Curriculum and Data Trends, Ms. Lipsit?
Yes, we met last week on Tuesday, September 2nd, at 4 o'clock in this room. In attendance were Assistant Superintendent Young, Assistant Director of Curriculum Kathy Boje, School Committee members Patricia Chisholm, Jesse Wetzel, and myself, and we had one member of the public present. The, looks like you're surprised.
No, I'm listening.
Sorry, did I already make a mistake? No. The first topic of discussion was competency determination. Ms. Young and Ms. Boje presented the work that the department's been doing towards a revised competency determination. This has been something that's been in progress ever since the statewide vote to remove ed cash as a graduation requirement. But they've done a tremendous amount of work, and the presentation that we received, the documentation we received is attached to my minutes and will be part of the public record. DESI has extended its deadline for School Committee approval from the original date of October 31st to December 31st, which gives us a little bit of time, is that correct? That's correct, right? Which gives us a little bit of time to make sure that all our ducks are in the row before we bring it to the School Committee later in this calendar year. Ms. Boje and Ms. Young noted that we do need to do a little bit of work to make sure that our internal practices are meeting the competency determination standards, that's part of what we'll be doing over the next couple of months. That includes updating descriptions of accessibility for students with disabilities and for ML students, so we will hear more about that at a later date, both the Curriculum Subcommittee and the larger committee. In terms of a department update, Ms. Young and Ms. Boje talked about the new staff onboarding and mentoring programs that have been worked out in collaboration with WTA, and that's something that is also appended as Item B on the minutes. It's a three-year mentoring program with associated professional development and training both for mentors and for new hires. Clearly a very well-thought-out program that had been built in collaboration with staff, which is great. And the coordinators are also going to be sort of using an annual checklist to check in with new hires and make sure they've gotten all the information that they need as they begin their careers here. We took a look at a draft of new Woburn Memorial High School grading procedures, that's a work in progress by Mr. Quailey and the school's ILT, so we'll come back to that as we go. We also discussed a little bit the process that's being developed in response to recent Supreme Court decisions concerning parental opt-out and requests for specific materials and lessons. This also might be a good time, because this came up in public comment as well. Ms. Young, you showed us in that meeting a new curriculum department website.
My timing is really close.
Yeah, how about that?
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't know if it's.
I sent it to Dr. Crowley to put it on the screen.
Okay, good, so I didn't want to put you on the spot, but it is a great website, so I want to make sure the public has a chance to see it as well.
Yeah, no, so we've been working very hard this summer on a full update of the website, which will launch this week in conjunction with the open house at all the elementary schools, as well as we'll be going out in a separate flyer specific to kindergarten families, and then we'll also be out in the curriculum communication that will go out to the community, I believe, the middle of next week. But I, some of the work has been, there was a lot of work done over the summer, and a lot of eyes that have been on it before we officially flipped the site over, but I did want to, just out of, I think we'll answer some of the questions, and so I just wanted to just quickly put it on the screen, just to show everyone what they can anticipate. We do have everything housed through the Atlas site, however, what was recognized is that while that site's really useful internally for staff, while it's been, well, the use is the external source, it is not soup, it is not the most user-friendly, and so we've kind of kept that as really, it will still remain public, so like it still can go in and be seen by families, but it's not a quick, the quick snapshot, which is what really families are looking for, and so what we've done is we pulled out the most important pertinent information for caregivers, and so I'm going to have you click kind of purposefully right now, just because, again, I think this is, my department would die that I'm putting this on the screen right now, because I promised them it was going live on Thursday, so just be kind for a minute, but if you click on grade level pages, and again, there's a lot more in here, and this will all go out this week as part of it, if you click on first grade, for example, and you click on math, just because I, this is where we're living right now, I'm in excitement, if you scroll down, this is for every single subject area. If you scroll, you can go, see quickly. It goes to learning targets, central questions, questions asked at home, and additional links to sources of books and text. This is across every subject area, every grade level, every content. Elementary is fully ready to go, and that will go out this week. The middle schools are continuing to work within their departments, theirs will be going up by department over the course of the year, and then high school will be coming up again a little bit slower behind it. The priority for the group had been to update elementary as quickly as possible, and so this one will be ready to launch this week. This is all content areas, subject areas. I will tell you, like, you're going to see spaces of it that say like under construction for a few weeks. We've got up what I think is the most important things that people need now. We're still working on updating and bringing over some things from the art department, our health department's working on updates, all of it is coming, I think that the four core contents, though, are all ready. And then if you go to where it says grade level pages, just click on it again, I'm not going to have you click further, but just as a higher level, if you scroll down a little bit on that sidebar, and if, no, sorry, go over to the Woburn Public School Scriptural and Sidebar there, yeah? Scroll down. You'll see that also in here, and you don't click now, but under MTSS data meetings is a full outline of the process that's used all throughout the year, related to the, all of the testing and universal screens that we give, as well as we'll be hosting over the course of the year, and this was not intended to be my update for the whole department tonight, but we'll be hosting virtual meetings aligned with every single letter that goes home or related to any of our data, so whether it's devil's data, star data, in which members of the department will be available to answer questions and go over that with families as the data comes home, as well as on here, we'll be given an update on report cards. I will say, like, strategic plan, that this is part of the work this year, is the elementary report card update, but at least in the meantime, the information should be more accessible to families, and this will go out this week. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Almost there.
It's a really impressive amount of work, and I know, you know, the Subcommittee was really impressed with the thought behind it and the work that had been done. So thank you, and especially as it came up tonight.
Yeah, no, so it should be, it will go out, our principals will share it on Wednesday, we'll be sending home kind of a, something with our, a little bit more comprehensive for our new incoming kindergarten families with accessibility for the website, and then it will be going out in the full communication to the community, in the larger communications in the district next week. Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Lipsit, anything else?
Yeah, we've got a brief discussion regarding new student request procedures for clubs, and then we adjourned at 5:21 PM, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lipsit. Any questions for Ms. Lipsit, Curriculum Data Trends? Policy Subcommittee, Ms. Cormier, did you already?
We have not met.
Okay, thank you. Resources of capital planning, Ms. Wetzel?
We are going to meet very soon, and I'll talk to everybody tonight before we need to get a date.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Student Service and Achievement, Ms. Melrennen?
Have not met, we have a co-teaching agenda item, so we'll try to get together soon.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. Correspondence, I believe there were two emails, one from Rachel Crueberry. What's wrong?
Who's tired? Co-Berry.
Co-Berry, thank you. Apologize, Rachel. Who wanted to integrate the busing changes with the wellness initiative as a suggestion to the committee, and Nancy Whipple emailed us requesting information on the Joyce DC trip, or lack thereof. So those are the two correspondents that we received.
Make a motion those go into part of the permanent record, Madam Chair?
I have a motion to make those part of the public record. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes, anyone opposed to it? No, seeing none, thank you.
I have correspondence, Madam Chair.
Of course.
That actually went out today in a reminder, thank you, Dr. Crowley, about the Friends of the Woburn Public Library book sale, which is happening next week. Students can volunteer in order to earn yes hours. They are accepting donations Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, in the program room downstairs by the children's area, and the sale takes place on Friday and Saturday. More information is on the library website, and that is how the Museum Pass program and other events at the library are funded, such as the Live Action Clue game that took place this summer, which was a rousing success.
Nice, awesome.
Thank you.
That's great. In the conservatory with the light pipe.
It was actually Woburn people will talk. It was fantastic.
Any other correspondences from the committee members? Yes, Ms. Wetzel?
Just two parents off our RES One program at the Shamrock. They were concerned last year with the lack of a special education teacher in the classroom and the communication around that, and a lot of those students don't come home and don't have the ability to communicate with families, so families weren't necessarily always aware, so it was brought to my attention by them, and I know CPAC is looking into it as well, but I think it's something important for the committee to be aware, and I shared it's something important for the committee to be aware, and I shared a conversation I had with a family member through Facebook. And then also communication around class assignments. So I had a good conversation with Dr. Crowley about how this all works, but there was concern from community members about the timeliness of the class assignments and when we get those, as it's important for kids to know who they have and class supply lists. Teachers, it helps them as well in their planning processes to get their letters out and understand who's in their classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence from any of the members? Good, moving on. Future agenda items, like I said, Mr. Quailey, or Dr. Crowley said, Mr. Quailey's coming with the new associate principal. That's going to be our next agenda item. Mr. Austin has made some changes to, he wants the committee to consider changes to a policy that he sent me, and I think because it already went to policy, I think I'm going to ask the committee to consider it en banc in the regular meeting, considering it already went to policy, so I would ask the committee to suspend the rules and allow me to put on the agenda adjusted policy language changes as presented by Mr. Austin. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'll put that on the next agenda item, and Mr. Austin can present the language changes that he made over the summer to the policy. Does that jive with you, Mr. Austin?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. All right, those are my, basically, the two future agenda items that I can think of right now. Ms. Wetzel?
I'm wondering when we have our new assistant principal from the high school, and maybe this is a separate item, but if we could get an update on the high school, we heard from a lot of students at our last meeting, and I would really like to revisit that and just see--
Yeah, that's, Mr. Quailey's coming to the--
So he's going to talk then about that?
Yes.
Oh, great, cool. Thank you. And then just the other thing would be our buildings and--
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
Thank you. So Mr. -- Dr. Crowley posed the question to the committee about the ongoing collection of data that's coming out of the survey, so I just want to remind people that there is a survey about the school buildings that they complete, and I would ask everyone to do that survey, so we can collect as much data as possible, because I don't think 100 and something responses is going to, that's not going to overwhelm the committee with data, so go ahead, Ms. Wetzel.
I'm wondering if we can send another remind out, just so parents that might have forgotten the link over the summer can have it.
Ms. -- Dr. Crowley, would you mind?
Sure.
Great. So that would remind people to complete the survey, and then we could have a robust discussion. I think that's the first step in looking at that, but I anticipate it will be on the agenda maybe in two meetings.
Do we think it would be helpful for the community if we had another forum, maybe not necessarily with Ms. Dinesco, but something where people can come, ask questions, raise concerns?
Yes.
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay. Well, that's a great suggestion. I think right now would probably be difficult to get our heads around it, so why don't I coordinate with Dr. Crowley on coming up with something that is public-facing and question-and-answer and dynamic in terms of the next steps for the buildings? Does that sound good, Ms. Wetzel?
That resets to me.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we'll do that.
On the survey?
On the survey, go ahead, Kim.
How long do you want to have it open for?
How long should I open it for?
Since July 30?
December 1st.
No, no, we have to vote on something before.
October 30th?
October, well, September.
Another month?
Probably October 15th, because we'd have to make a decision so we can get going on what we're doing.
Okay, that's a great idea.
I like it.
And in enough time before our meeting to be able to collate that data?
Collate. So our, we have a meeting on the 29th. So why don't we, for that meeting, plan on synthesizing the data on that meeting and taking a look at where we are in terms of public data?
Okay.
The 29th?
The 15th, though. I just, when I put it out, I just, I think sometimes it's helpful for people to know.
Right, there's a deadline.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. Great idea. So we will run the survey about where people want to go with the buildings until October 15th, and then we will take two weeks in attempt to start really unpacking that data on October 29th. And then myself and Dr. Crowley will talk about another public-facing opportunity for the public, I won't use the word forum, but opportunity for the public to ask questions and engage with the committee to some extent on that. Okay, great. That's a good game plan. Moving on to, we have an executive session tonight. Can I have a motion for moving into the executive session for the purposes of--
Deliberating.
Deliberating on collective bargaining, because I have deemed that it will impact the position of the school committee should we do it in public.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
In favor.
Ms. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrenin?
In favor.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, so I deem we have been moving into executive session on unanimous vote to discuss the purposes of SEIU.[1742.91]